Need now?
Only if you choose to, Connie.
Always behave.
Only if you choose to.
Whoops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still there?
Yeah.
Um, should I bring that? What you and I were talking about the other day about that sign, should I bring that up in closed session?
No, no, just I would just bring it up in roundtable.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening.
Hello.
Odell's, oh, you're going back in time.
Years ago.
Good evening.
So how many years ago is that?
Well, I remember Odell's, so it's not that long ago. Oh, wait, no, that doesn't count. No, that's never mind. Um. Odell's, I don't know, Brass would probably remember better, or Rhonda. That.
Twenty's on anyway.
Yeah, I certainly don't remember.
I don't know. Turn of the century.
Yeah.
Where I don't think so.
So would that be where Western Financial is?
Yeah, pretty close. Yeah, yeah, they. Yeah. Just trying to think. And like they're there in the in the seventies for sure, they were still there.
I actually worked there as a young lad.
Oh, so that's a long time ago.
That white building behind you in the corner is the meat market is not right here.
Yeah, yeah, it's backwards, isn't it? It's right, whatever, doesn't matter.
No, it's not backwards. It looks like it, you know, you're sitting right on. You're sitting right on Main Street, right out in the middle.
Isn't this lettering backwards?
It says Odell Limited.
You better watch that.
On my screen is backwards.
Oh, well, it's proper the right way here.
So it's a mirror image of a mirror image.
Yes, it's fine. It's good. If you guys can see it, it's fine. Counselor Olson is or Counselor Jensen is.
Coming? No.
Oh, she's not. Okay.
No, yeah, she's not gonna be able to be here tonight.
Okay, good. Okay, that's fine then. So I have six o'clock, so we will call this meeting to order. And with that, we do have an addition to the correspondence. So we will add twelve point one seven. Letter regarding flags at half mast from Lindsay and Kevin Heine. I'm not sure if I'm to have that written out a little differently, but that's probably okay. It's we have the gist of what it is. So with that amendment of the addition of twelve point one seven to the correspondence items are entertaining motion. Thank you, Councilor Campion, all in favor? And that is carried. Uh, do we have nobody for delegations, Mr. Neil?
No, we don't.
Okay, good, thank you. No one here for public presentation. I don't assume Brad is here for that.
No.
We're pretty sure I know why he's here, so um, good chance. Uh, so then I guess with that, we need to take care of some previous meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting held May eleventh, twenty twenty one be adopted as presented. Thank you, Counselor Stickell. Any questions, errors, or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? That is carried. That I would also entertain a motion that the minutes of the special meeting of council held May twenty six, twenty twenty one be adopted is presented. Thank you, Counselor Bowden. Any questions, errors, or omissions? Then I'll call a question. All in favor? That is carried. And it also entertained a motion that the minutes of the information meeting of council had held May twenty six, twenty twenty one be adopted as presented. Thank you, Counselor Olson. Any questions, errors, or omissions? Okay, all in favor? And that is carried. Takes us to our financial report six point one. I would entertain a motion that council accepts the account payable listings for general account checks four one six four seven to four one six nine four and direct deposit payments of zero 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 two seven seven two zero 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 three twenty one for information. Thank you, Counselor Deadlock. Any questions regarding the accounts payable? Counselor Campion?
Yeah, number zero zero two eight nine. Two nine zero. And uh. Zero zero two nine eight.
So.
All about the spray park is this.
So what was your first one, Counselor Camping? Was it zero zero two eight or zero two?
Two eight, two eight nine.
Two eight nine?
And two nine zero, two ninety eight.
So, yeah.
Spray park bills, is this?
So.
These are on top of everything we put in already.
So just I'll just explain it to you, Counselor Campion. So to uh, I just gotta get the the numbers here, right? So two eight nine is is part of our operating budget for the spray park. So we bought some health and safety equipment, first aid kit, stuff like that. So that will be part of our our operated budget that we approved. Um, the other one was what, two?
Nine zero.
Two nine zero. Let me just find it here.
The key.
So key, same thing that will be coded to our operating budget and two nine one. Was that the other one?
Two nine.
Sorry, you muted yourself, Counselor Campion.
Two nine eight, Kim.
Two nine eight. Okay, yeah, two nine eight is will be will be most likely will be part of the um capital costs. So we'll have to uh, when we're done the project, we'll look at that. But that will be something that will be part of the initial capital cost.
So just an indication of bills to come. Okay, thank you.
Well, the Counselor Campion, just so just so we're all on the same page. So council did approve an operating budget for the spray park as part of the twenty one budget and of seventy five hundred dollars, so.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Olson, did you have a question?
I just want to see how serious the uh, arena roof repairs, if that was just maintenance or because I'm always nervous of big expensive buildings, if it's a sign of more to come.
I'll let Director Stell answer that for us.
Um, the major work on the roof was done approximately twenty years ago, I believe. So we always have a little bit of maintenance on a roof that size. We like to stay on top of it. So we had a couple of leaks that we noticed this spring. And it's actually preventative maintenance at this point. As you know, roofing is expensive, roof repairs are expensive. Um, but we hopefully got on top of this and have it fixed and that just extends the life of our building, so.
I will be thrilled if we spend seven thousand dollars every twenty years on that.
Well, we have spent more than seven thousand dollars in twenty years, I can assure you that. Um, but it is just part of our regular maintenance that we have to be on top of. And we actually had an issue where there's a drain that comes down in between the buildings and it was leaking between. So we want to be on top of that. We said get into the structural integrity of the building. So we keep on top of that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bowden?
I just wanted to make a comment to put it into perspective. We had ninety five hundred square feet um, of resurfacing done by the same company and it was sixty five thousand dollars. So it it is would be minor in in that realm of the uh, cost. So it just gives you an idea.
Just just to clarify, by we, you're saying? Uh, you're muted, sorry.
Shoot, I hate that. That Hannah Rondo society.
Thank you, just for clarity for anyone that might be watching, they might be.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions regarding the accounts payable? Counselor Campion?
Yeah, I think uh, when you were showing is it is this where the accounts are with the Royal Bank and all that is? Your statement's not?
Kim? Not I'm not sure of your question, Counselor Campion.
Uh, well, it's zero four one six eighty, the Royal Bank accounts for uh.
Director Armstrong?
Well, Armstrong, yeah.
So, yeah, that would be, that's our cred, that's our Visa credit card.
Yeah, that total at the right of the first one is only nine hundred fifty nine ninety four. How do you get that one? The first bill on it is twenty four hundred and some dollars. Is that not a, that a mistake? Because there's quite a few on that line.
No, if you look at it, Counselor Campion, it's a it is confusing. There were a number of credits given back. So anything that has a minus there is a credit.
Okay.
So after all of that shakes down, the the nine hundred dollar amount is is what was paid.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Great to you. Any further questions? Okay, then I'll call a question. All in favor? And that is carried. That takes us to six point uh, two, statement of revenue and expenses. I would entertain a motion that council accepts the statement of revenue and expense report for May twenty twenty one for information. Thank you, Counselor Stickell. Any questions regarding the statement of revenue and expenses? Okay, I'll call a question then. All in favor? That is carried. That takes us to six point three, the budget overview. I would entertain a motion that council accepts the budget overview for May twenty twenty one for information. Thank you, Counselor Campion. Any questions regarding the budget overview? Okay, I'll call a question. All in favor? And that is carried. That takes us to committee ports. We did not have a committee report submitted for this month, so that takes us to senior administrative officials reports. And we will start, of course, as always, with our illustrious leader, Mr. Neal, our chief executive, our chief administrative officer, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not uh, not much to add to my report. I just want to make sure um, council's aware of the demolition process that has been started. So Cactus Corridor, um, been working with with Mark. Um, as council's aware, the first step in the demolition process is a hazard uh, assessment of each of the buildings. So Cactus Corridor provided funds to have the um, one public building and two private buildings assessed. And uh, we're waiting the reports uh, from the consultants on what they found in terms of hazardous material that would have to be removed. And from that point, um, from that point on, when we get the report back, they're also going to provide us with an estimated cost for abatement and demolition. To give us a bit of a ballpark uh, moving forward, I also, as you're aware, I did add the uh property at two oh six Fox Lake Trail that the town recovered through tax property. So we'll get a report on it. I know that's been a bit of a stickler, I think, with uh, one prospective property owner just wanting to know what type of hazardous material is in there because they don't want to necessarily purchase it and find out there's significant hazard hazardous material in there that's really going to cost a lot of money to to get rid of properly. So so we'll get the report on those properties. We're hoping sometime even this week possibly. And um, we will have to bring those forward to council and have some discussions about how we move forward. Once we get those reports and once we get those quotes, that's where for council, the rubber's going to hit the road. Um, because there's going to be dollars have to be committed to move forward. I know we're going to work with Western Economic defensification to see if we can get uh, funding for the demolition and um, even with uh, one of the privately owned properties that is in the tax recovery process, their intention is to let it go to tax recovery. They're done with it. So we're either going to have to deal with it now or deal with it later and and it will be some significant dollars that council will have to have that discussion about how we move forward. So just wanted to uh, let you know, we're working on the process. The next one will be, the next step will be the the big one. Um, and we'll have to have some discussion with council and and direction from council on how they want to proceed moving forward. Um, and just the other comment I have in regards to the central meets proper that we took forward. Fire chief was in the facility briefly and and has basically feels that it is unsafe for anyone to enter in there. The the support beam for the second floor has has broken. So um, he's he's concerned about that. In discussions with um Eco Bait, um, they say there are options for demolition when you don't have to remove the hazardous material. But it it saves you some dollars on the removal of hazardous material, but it adds costs on your demolition because you have to do it in a certain manner, which would probably include a lot of water on the product as it's coming down to keep all the dust uh, under control and and not spreading. So we're working through that process. Um, and that will be all part of the information we'll bring back to council when we we move on to the next step of this process. And I'm hoping it could be, you know, it should be before the next by the the next council meeting, we should have that information and have some ideas of how we can move forward.
Counselor Bowden, you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering, um you know, as far as the private uh, properties, you indicated the one is going to be going to tax recovery. Um, I I just don't follow how that works when he is current with his taxes at the moment, is he not? And my second part to that question is, is there going to be any private money coming into the expenses for um, the demolition and the abatement? Or is the town on on the hook for all of that as well?
So just to clarify, Counselor Bowden, one of the two properties that are privately held that have been assessed. One is in current in good standing. So if the town wished to uh, move forward with that, that would have to be decision. The town would have to purchase that property or make an arrangement to have title to that property. The other property is in the tax recovery process and is all indications are they're letting it go. And so it will go through the process. Um, we will get it in a in a year from now. Um, but I'm sure if we wanted to move forward on it quicker, knowing that it's going to become ours, that would be a decision of council to move forward quicker with it than wait till it goes through the tax recovery process fully. But eventually it's going to come to the town.
And will how much of the money from Cactus Corridor and WD will be covering it, um, the demo? Or is it just the abatement?
The question, that would be a cactus question I can't answer, and I don't think they have the information to make a decision on it. My my impression is that uh, the um there may not be any money forthcoming from Cactus or uh, WED on the one property. Um, because there's no, I I know they're interested in helping if there's um, some sort of promise or guarantee that there's a development um, imminent on that property if it's demolished. And um, but with those are all discussions that we have to have with WED in terms of the money we've got and how we can uh negotiate uh, you know, as big a pie as we can from WD and that information we don't have, but we'll be bringing back to you hopefully prior to the next council meeting with a with a full report on what buildings would come down, what the costs are going to be and what the funding plan would be. And at that point in time, council can um, approve the funding plan, council can put the brakes on it, you know, count the decision will be up to council at that time.
Yeah, I just have another comment that um, you know, it's kind of um unnerving when we've got business or people that own businesses and choose to do nothing with their building for years and years and years. And then all of a sudden, then they are going to transfer it over to the town and have them um, look after it. I think that is uh, we're setting a kind of a poor precedent and somehow need to put something um, on the responsibility of the property owner, the the business owner to um, do something with their property before it gets to the point where there's nothing solvable and it and it requires demolition.
I know, Counselor Bowden, I can speak a little bit to that. I know it's not just a problem in Hannah, it's a problem in.
Everywhere.
All rural areas. And the the problem is with the municipal government act. Uh, it doesn't give us enough uh, leverage to put on on brownfield. You call them whatever you want, but these they're the kind of properties and and uh, you know, it's unfortunate because uh, we are we're the ones as tax, I mean, there's one taxpayer regardless, but you know, you we get hung with that that burden and uh, it's either you let it go and and make it, you know, leave it like looking like garbage or you try to do something with it and make it better and hope that somebody can, you know, develop that property into a better place. So I ended, I totally agree with you. I, you know, I wish we had better leverage, uh, but we just unfortunately no, no municipality does.
Well, and the loss of WD money too, that is going to go towards that and then, you know, going towards something else we could utilize. So that's all I could say.
The only the only other comment, Counselor Bowden, is it's more of an issue in small rural towns where property values are 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 not are what they are. So if this lot was in Calgary or Edmonton um, and it might be worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, then you know, there's the the money in the situation. But when you've got a lot that you might be able to sell for twenty thousand dollars, um, it doesn't come near to cover in the cost of demolition. So the owners unfortunately choose to walk away.
Wow, it it's just um, it's just, you know, disappointing that we've got some irresponsible um, owners.
Is that it then, Mr. Neil?
Yep.
Okay, and Counselor Bowden, okay, any further questions for our CAO? Okay, thank you for that. That takes us to eight point zero three, a director of, Kim, oh, no, it isn't. I don't have one for Lori. Lori, are you going to give us? I don't have it on my agenda, so, uh, but we will go to Director Armstrong for her report.
I ran out of time in the month to get a written report together. Um, just been really crazy busy as as usual.
I know.
Yeah, Gwen's got her staff hired in place and going crazy with with programs. And we know how that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna try to do it this way, but it might change on the tenth of June, or it might change on the fourteenth, or it might not. So trying to prepare and manage through all that and we're getting, we're getting good at that, but it it still takes a lot of time as all this stuff gets pulled together, lots of different things that she's got going on in her in her department. Um. The one thing that Counselor Olson brought up, I believe it was last me last month, was the um, the reporter problem or reporter concern form that had been spoken about previously. So I've done a little bit of follow up on that. It's not, it it isn't dead. It's just fighting for some time to work on it. We've got a plan in place. We just, I just need to get it implemented and get it rolling. Um, otherwise business as usual, just trying to keep everything running.
Awesome. Uh, is there, are there any questions for Director Armstrong? Okay, thank you for that. That takes us to Director of Community Services, Director Snell. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, uh, we do like to think of our department as the department that puts the snap and the crack and the popple into uh live the lifestyle. And so we have come on, as Lori says, full steam ahead with our programs for the summer. We have excellent staff this year uh, with Darcy Hall doing the epic adventures and some of our community events programming. And you'll notice that you have a full and comprehensive list within the report of what's coming up, including music in the park every Sunday from four till five thirty. Uh, we're gonna, we've got the first five Sundays set with that. And we're doing some of these programs with the help of of that um, Blue Cross COVID Roots Community Roots program. So we're able to provide a little honorarium for some of those musicians. Not big bucks by any means, but a little honorarium, pay some of our instructors, and we're trying to provide those good news, outdoor programs, keep keep the community spirit up and keep people happy. Um, Canada Day, Lori's absolutely right with the uh, changing COVID regulations and where we're heading to. I, we had resigned our fact, ourselves to the fact that we may not do a flag raising. And within a week, we're doing a flag raising, um, because we're hearing rumblings that things are going to start dropping off and we'll be allowed to move forward. I have been in uh, contact with the bounce house supplier, for example. He contacted me, reached out and said he's already taken a couple of bookings. And my comment to him was if you can assure me that we can open and operate your bounce houses with absolutely no restrictions because trying to keep people in lines, I think as uh, Rhonda said, navigate that on Canada Day would be a nightmare that we would consider having him in place. So um, after the twenty eighth of June, we may do some quick pivoting and changing and try and provide, I think, some good entertainment on Canada Day for the community. But staff are pretty excited. Um, as you can see from the report, I want to thank council again for their support of the Parks Department and doing the tree planting. We had some an excellent week last week, pretty tired staff, uh, but we did some good inroads there. And in addition to that, I have some very happy people that made tree donations this year that, um, you know, I've reached out, for example, the individual who donated on behalf of Doug Todd was very pleased with the tree selection and the one that we planted in block fifty eight. So that's stuff that we're doing, council's doing and supporting for future generations. Uh, the trees we plant today are going to be noticeable twenty years from now and uh, make a difference in the community. So thank you for that support. Um, good comments back from our ball uh, evaluation, Mr. Larry Goldie. And I always like it when people from outside the community recognize our staff. And he had lots of good things to say about the maintenance and the shape of our bald diamonds. So um, that was good news as well. So I think it's a pretty inclusive report. Uh, we aren't letting any uh, grass grow under our feet, so to speak. People are moving pretty fast. If there's any questions about the report, I'd be pleased to answer those.
Hey. Mr. Neil?
Just a comment for council on Canada Day. Um, fireworks. So if you're talking to anyone, fireworks are planned for the Thursday evening. So June thirtieth, eleven fifteen at Fox Lake. So just just, I know that's a a big, one of the bigger expenditures on Canada Day and and we do flip and flop whether it's on July first or whether it's on June thirtieth. So we want to make sure that uh people are aware it will be June thirtieth, eleven fifteen PM at Fox Lake.
Good. Thank you for that. Okay, there's no further questions. Thank you for that, Director Snell. That takes us to Director of Protective Services, Director Moore. I'll just turn the floor over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I really don't have anything to add to my written report and would entertain any questions that council may have.
Okay, yes, Counselor Olson?
Uh, just one question, comment, whatever. Um. I've heard from several people about, you know, complaint feedback, um, just to kind of close the loop when they do issue a complaint. Um, and the, it's unfortunate when they hear nothing back, they assume nothing's happening. Um, so I just want to follow up on that because I've, of course, I as well have submitted one and it, it seems like the problem's getting worse before anywhere near it gets better. Um, so I just want to see if there's any desire to, if there's a email address or a something on the form, just to shoot a quick message off. I mean, you don't need to trying to give massive details with everyone, but just to help close the loop would end some frustration, hopefully.
Yeah, generally speaking, I do try to do that on on larger complaints, uh, especially ones that involve property and those type of things. A lot of complaints that are verbal complaints I don't normally get back to. I I do try to uh uh, take care of them and get them done. And usually the proof is in the pudding when they see that action has been taken. So uh, but I do, I do, I do attempt to get uh, you know, a follow up for sure. And certainly when people ask me for a follow up, I do always give that, so.
Thank you for that. Any further questions, comments? Director Armstrong?
Counselor Olson, were you speaking directly to the reporter concern form or? Councillor Olson, were you speaking directly to the reporter concern form or? Okay.
Just a bylaw complaint. I just heard from a few people that whether it's over winter or unsightly lawns, they just, you know, they offer it. And then they said, well, nothing happened until the snow melted. And then, of course, the sidewalk was clear. And it's just when it's unsightly lawns, there's one I walk by every day that, of course, it's never windy here, but once in a while when it is, we all know. Everything that's accumulated on the lawn is suddenly on the road and in the neighbor's yard. So yeah, just a little close the loop type on those complaint forms.
Any further questions? All right, thank you for that, Director Moore. That takes us to twelve or eight point zero five, Director Public Works, Director Olson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have nothing further to add to my report and would take any questions if there is any.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Olson? I, okay, councillor Olson.
Has there been any experiments with adding any kind of oil or adhesion to those millings?
Sean Kovitz just got their road crews all going and last week, Wednesday, Sean Owen, all the boys from Special Ares in a couple outfits out of the city were out back here looking at the pile. So I'm hoping to hear some at the end of the week on what they plan to try with some different material. So there is some progress, it's just taking a little bit.
Yeah, awesome. Councillor Boden?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate you on your new employee. So that's going to be exciting.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you for that, Director Olson. And with that, I would entertain a motion that council accepts the senior administrative officials' report eight point zero one to eight point zero five as presented for information. Thank you councillor Dedlock, all in favor? That is carried. All right, that takes us to some business items. Nine point zero one, Palliser entry municipal subdivision and appeal board appointments. I would entertain a motion that council appoint Mr Gerald Champion and Mr Kim Neal to the Palliser Inter Municipal subdivision and development appeal board for a three-year term ending May 31st of 2024. Thank you councillor Stickell. Any, is there any questions or do you want to speak to it at all?
Just, just briefly, Mr Mayor. So I, I know council, we appointed Mr Wallace at the last meeting. I should have brought forward councillor Champion and myself, but at that point in time, there was no, there was an imminent need for Mr Wallace to be appointed. The challenge that councillor Champion will face is on any SDAB appeals, there can only be one councillor. So if it's in Painters, for example, and they have a councillor, you know, there's only one that can be appointed. For myself, I will be appointed as a clerk, so it's more of an administrative process. And I can be appointed as a clerk. I have pointed out to Palliser that I certainly, I did take the training, I did pass the training, but at the end of the day, I haven't been involved in any hearings. So I'm very green. So certainly have expressed the, the, my interest in if there is a SDAB and I can shadow a clerk or do something in that regard, certainly I will, I will like to do that before I do get thrust in. I know they've got a couple of clerks lined up right now. The other comment from myself is that I'm trained as a board member as well, but as I mentioned to council before, there's been a legal interpretation that basically precludes staff from municipalities participating on the SDAB. Even if it's in another municipality, we thought that would be okay, but there, the legal guys say that there is a perceived bias. So because I'm a municipal background, I'm a municipal person, I might have connection with the municipality that the appeals are in, and then I potentially might bring some bias to my decision making. So Palliser is probably going to have to be back out on the hunt for more volunteers such as Mr Wallace. And if anybody is interested, training was, was good, two days. And you know, I know Mr Wallace sat in on his first hearing and, and really enjoyed it. So if you're talking to anybody who has any interest there, Palliser will be looking for some more general volunteers to become trained and be part of their SDAB panel.
And I see Devon, Deano's on the meeting. Devon, did you want to add anything to that at all?
Sure, I can jump in here quick. I hope you guys, hope you guys can hear me okay.
Yeah, well, normally if, if our meeting was running a little slow, I wouldn't even give it the opportunity, but we, we need some fill time, I think. No, if you want to speak to it, that'd be good. We appreciate that. That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. I know Kim, Kim actually did a good job. He mentioned a lot of the high points. I know it was kind of a big discussion we've had with the whole ISDA B membership and how to approach it. There's a few municipalities on either side of the fence who wanted to allow municipal staff to go forward with that. Allow municipal staff to sit on ISDA B, but we felt even at the board level, that is probably a better approach for the reasons that Kim talked about to, to make sure that those sitting on, on the board are volunteers or one councillor member at the max. So that's the route we decided to go just to ensure that we weren't putting our municipalities in any legal issues down the road. Go more on the safe side of things. And as a result of that, one of the challenges we're going to have is just making sure we can have enough volunteers. Right now, we do have enough on the roster to hold a successful appeal, which we did a week or two ago and actually, sorry, I'm blanking on his first name, last name, Wallace.
Todd Wallace.
That's right. Sorry about that. Todd Wallace was able to help us out with that one, which was great. So yeah, we've been able to successfully handle the hearings as is right now. But going forward, just the more we can fill that roster, the better. So just to echo Kim's statements, if there's any members of the public that you guys know that would be interested in that type of role or looking for, looking to boost their resume. It's always a good thing to show on your resume. So we'd be more than open to, to volunteers and helping to arrange training for that.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that, Devon. Any questions for Devon? Brass, councillor Champion, sorry.
Well, Devon, just a comment, maybe in three months, you won't have to worry about councillor part in front of my name, so.
That sounds good. If, yeah, if you're not planning on running for council again and anyone else on council that might not be going that direction, we'd be more than happy to have you part of the ISDA B if you're still looking to be involved in the community.
Awesome. Any further questions for Devon? Okay, thank you Devon for that. Appreciate it. Any further questions regarding the motion? Seeing none, I will call a question. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you for that. That takes us to nine point zero two. Council code of conduct complaint. I would entertain a motion that council authorizes mayor to respond to the complaint. Mr Corey Ashley to, to Mr Corey Ashley to confirm that council has reviewed the letter dated May 18th, 2021 and the corresponding material provided in support of the complaint that councillor Kyle Olson has violated the town of Hannah council code of conduct by law, nine nine four dash 2018. And following review of the evidence, council does not find reasonable and probable grounds for the allegation that councillor Olson has contravened this bylaw and considers the matter closed. Thank you councillor Champion.
So Mr Warwick, Mayor Warwick, just a few comments. So you, you got the entire package that we received from Mr Ashley, his letter, the editorial copy as well as the numerous pages of Facebook screenshots. Going through it administratively, it is my opinion and my opinion only, and certainly council, if council has a different opinion, we can move forward in a different manner. But my opinion basically on the evidence supplied is, first of all, it was disjointed, difficult to follow in terms of, of comments that might have been on a post that was three pages earlier. Many, many of the pages were duplicates. And, and, and or the comments were duplicated. Thirdly, many of the pages do not refer to comments made to or by councillor Olson or Kyle Olson. There is certainly a significant number of pages that there's no reference to Kyle or councillor Olson. And at the end of the day, we are dealing with councillor Olson's code of conduct and administratively, my opinion was I did not see anything in the material supplied that made me feel that councillor Olson had violated the council code of conduct by law in any manner. And the last thing with Mr Ashley's letter is the bullying bylaw is there for the RCMP. It still is there for the RCMP. So in terms of someone charging, being charged under the bullying bylaw, that is a decision of the RCMP. Even if the town of Hannah wanted to have someone charged under the bylaw, that would be a decision of the RCMP. It's not, the town can't tell the RCMP who should be charged, who shouldn't be charged. That is totally in the hands of the RCMP. So as far as, as us, you know, using the bylaw to find one of, you know, the so-called online bullies in town, that is in the RCMP's hands, not the town of Hannah's hands. So I'm certainly, that was my interpretation of the evidence. If, if council has a different interpretation of it or would like to provide any other comments, certainly the floor is yours.
Councillor Dedlock?
I agree with you a hundred percent, Kim. I didn't see any bullying in the information that was provided. It was more information that other people spoke. Also, I didn't see any comments, many comments that Mr Ashley had made himself. So I wasn't really sure where the context of most of the comments were even coming from. So I agree with you a hundred percent.
The, it is a difficult, it is a difficult situation from the fact that sometimes on that page, there are some not so nice things said. We've, we've all been there. We've all seen it. But it, not that I'm excusing anybody who does do that, but at the end of the day, it is a rant and rave page and that is the premise of it. Unfortunately, it sometimes gets negative and casts a negative spirit across our community. And I know it frustrates a number of people because they do say that it doesn't provide a true reflection of the community. And I know in a number of the comments on rant and rave specifically that were mentioned, and I've mentioned this to a lot of you and I've maybe mentioned it before, I do believe that people got out of hand on both sides of the situation. On, on some of the situations, but at the end of the day, those that were defending themselves, I think they might have stepped, you know, maybe they didn't do it in the most professional, proper way, but at the end of the day, they were defending their community. They were defending, you know, businesses in the community and, you know, sometimes emotions get heated. Sometimes people say things, you know, they otherwise wouldn't, but that's one of the downfalls of Facebook and one of the extreme downfalls of a rant and rave page is that, you know, it, it creates that, it lends itself to that. And it's generally not, not a, not a good thing for a community.
Yeah, and I, I also had the opportunity to look at the documents and, and I didn't see, I'm not saying that, that there isn't bullying that happens on any social media because it's always there. But I didn't see any evidence of that in, in, in the case of our code of conduct regarding councillor Olson. So I concur with all of that. It's a sad thing that, that people sit in front of their keyboards and they wail away without any ramifications. Nine times out of ten, I don't think that person would say that to your face. And that's, that's the sad thing about it. It's changed people and how they behave. But that's what it is. And you just do like me and delete your account. You don't have to worry about it. Anyway, with that, any further comments? All right, I'll call a question and all in favor. And that is carried. All right, that takes us to nine point zero three. Coal development eastern slopes. I would entertain a motion that council authorizes the mayor to provide an endorsement of support on behalf of the town of Hannah to advise that the town supports the proposed Alberta coal restriction policy as prepared by the town of High River. Thank you councillor Boden.
Yeah, sure, Mr Mayor. As, as you're aware, council's received numerous letters over the last couple of meetings in regards to coal development on the eastern slopes. As I say in the report, the province has rescinded certainly where they were intending to go. And now they have a coal policy committee that's been established and they're expected to finish the report and provide recommendations to the Minister of Energy by November 15th, 2021. The town of High River has been very aggressive or a leader, I guess, in terms of the eastern slopes coal development. And they have, they have sent a letter to all Alberta municipalities asking for support to their proposed Alberta coal restriction policy. It has three key principles. One, that no further coal exploration or development will be permitted on eastern slopes of Alberta. There will no longer be categories within this area and instead there would only be one area defined today as eastern slopes. Existing coal mining operations in the Hinton Grand Carry, Grand Cache areas will be permitted to retire gracefully. And the reclamation of lands disturbed by coal exploration activities with coal exploration permits issued prior to February 8th, 2021 must be reclaimed no later than December 31st, 2025. And they do have their rationale for their principles, but as we discussed on the 26th, I was bringing this back to council and if council supports the town of High River Alberta coal restriction policy, we certainly can endorse their policy and give them that support as they move it through to the provincial coal committee. You're muted.
Thank you for that background. That's excellent. Any questions, comments regarding this? I know we discussed it a little bit at our last meeting.
Yeah, Mayor Warwick, just to let you know, the Red Deer River Municipal user group, we also wrote a letter in regards to it. We had a meeting with them, with the assistant deputy minister and had quite discussion on it. There was a lot of good things brought up about it at the meeting and in with them and they know our feelings on it and everything. And it was mostly to protect the water in the headwaters of the Red Deer River and other rivers coming down because we get our drinking water out of it. So just so you know, I, I believe the mugs, we wrote a support letter as well, so.
Good. Thank you for that councillor Champion. Yeah, that's important to know that. All right, any other comments, questions regarding that? And I'll call a question, all in favor? And that is carried. So get writing, Kim. I guess it's already kind of there. All right, takes us nine point zero four. COVID-19 operating plan update. Do you want to just go ahead, Kim, and then we can have the motion after if you'd like.
Sure, Mr Mayor. So I, I think we've got some good news ahead of us. As you know, on, we entered stage one, which didn't affect us much. The only thing that it allowed in our community that wasn't already allowed was patios being open. So certainly a benefit to, to our restaurants, our bars, to at least get some business going and get back in, in the game. Stage two, Premier Kenny has announced we will enter stage two on June 10th. So on Thursday, we have met the requirement of 60% of Alberta age 12 have received at least one dose of vaccine and hospitalizations are below 500 and declining. I didn't get a chance to check today, so I'm not sure where the numbers I didn't get a chance to check today, so I'm not sure where the numbers and are at. I know yesterday we were at 66.7% of all eligible Albertans had received their first dose and our hospitalizations were dropping. So there is a very good chance that we will be able to enter stage three two weeks after 70% of Albertans have received the vaccine. I was estimating that that was going to be another eight days away from here now, kind of based at the progression of the first doses. But I know I read a little bit of information yesterday and they're a little bit of concern that the first dose is are starting to die down. And it's going to be, I think it's going to be a close, you know, close to get to that 70. I don't think it's going to be a real easy thing, but I'm hoping that we're there sometime next week, which two weeks from that would mean that basically we have no restrictions. It's quite a, I've told this to a lot of people. We've been in this for so long. And then all of a sudden we go and we're going to go from step two or stage two on June 14th and have some more restrictions lifted, but still have some restrictions to all of a sudden after 15 months to say no restrictions, you you're good to go. You can do what you want to do. You can have as many gatherings as you want, as large gatherings as you want. So it's going to be an interesting phenomenon as we enter that because it'll be interesting to see how many people really want to get out in in large populations and in large gatherings, but the opportunity will be there. So we're moving forward. As I said, the arena, arena is open again, it's generally a quiet time anyways. But we are hoping that the rodeo will be able to move ahead and it is booked for September 24 to the 26th. And the hospital auxiliary rummage sale is is booked for October 2nd. We're hope that that they'll be able to pull that off and want to move forward. Curling rink, we do have our weekly farmers markets there. The gun show is tentatively booked for July 17th and 18th. And again, the rummage sale for October 2nd. We are potentially wondering what may happen with grad. And as grad moves forward, I know they've picked a date mid to late July for grad and and whether they want to have it indoor, they may be able to go back into the arena and the curling rink like they have done pre, pre COVID. So so it's moving forward. Centennial place is probably the facility that we have the most changes in. So as we move forward on June 10th, we can open, we've made the decision to open on June 14th, which is the Monday. So we'll be open basically nine to five, Monday to Friday, still closed weekends. And basically the fitness center will be open. Walking track will be open. Epic adventures will be starting up in the building beginning of July. Kitty's corner is closed and Hannah Dance is winding up. So people want to use the walking track after June 10th on Thursday, they can between nine to five. We are gonna, even when stage three hits, we're going to still, we're going to expand our hours a little longer in the evenings, but we're still going to close weekends and see how that goes. Generally, it's fairly quiet. And again, it's just a matter of saving some, saving some dollars. We will open if someone wants to book it for a private function, whether they have a birthday party or anything on a Saturday, Sunday. We'll certainly make that available. Community center, again, that'll, that's the real wild card. Potentially the end of June, we could have a 400 seat wedding in there and it would, it would be fine. It would meet restrictions. I think some people may be a little cautious there. And I think people aren't going to be rushing out to necessarily book those large functions early in July anyways, because of the yo-yo we've been on in terms of restrictions, no restrictions back and forth. So I think people are a little cautious. And again, it's getting late in the year for weddings. But we will be open and hopefully we'll be able to return to some sort of normal events in there as we get into the fall, whether stage Hannah decides to do something, whether Christmas parties go ahead. I guess those are still in the hands of those organizations, but it looks like they will be able to do them as they have normally done them in the past. So Fox Lake Park, we've been open, operating. No real changes there. Swimming pool, we've been open and operating since the 21st. Minor changes there. Obviously, if we get into no restrictions, then we can increase our capacity. But other than that, it's pretty much business as usual as we've gone along. Spray park, getting close to being operational. So I know last week when it was 30 degrees out, I know that it would have been great to have it open, but it is being commissioned this week. So the PlayQuest is out with their manufacturer who manufactures the water treatment plant side. They're running through it, testing everything, making sure everything works. They'll be training our staff on how to operate it and how it works and troubleshoot it. The pouring place will be installed the next week. So following that install and following whether it needs some time to set up, you know, before we have people on it. We are hoping to, you know, we don't have a definite date, but we're hoping that we could be open around June 20th. If things went according to plan and if the weather cooperates. As I said to Gwen, if the forecast is bad and it's going to be 15, 18, you know, we'll hold off. But the forecast is nice. We should be, unless something goes sideways, we should be able to operate as of the 20th. The one thing we may need to do is put in some snow fence around the landscaped areas just to protect them until they get established because there'll be lots of traffic running in and through there if we don't. Lions Hall, same as the community center, it's open for bookings. And I know we have one for the end of July for a birthday party. So we'll start to get some uses there. Other than that, everything's moving forward. Minor Ball has been able to participate in soccer in practices. They will be able to after Thursday, hold games and have games against other teams. I'm not sure, you know, late in the season, how much they will be able to do there, but I'm hoping they're able to take advantage of it. Not sure if we're going to get anything going with our slow pitch league. They normally, the adults started in May and would kind of go May, June, and then kind of back off in July because of vacation. It's one of those things I'm a little fearful of that we haven't had for two years. So to get people to jump back in it again, might be, you know, might be a little hesitant. Found other opportunities, found other hobbies. I know a number of those people have taken to the golf course and are golfing rather than playing slow pitch. But hopefully we get that back. It might just be something we get back next year. So Gwen talked about the programming. We've talked about the staffing, so I don't think there's anything, unless there's any questions, Mr Mayor, I'd be pleased to answer.
Councillor Boden and then councillor campaign.
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate the town staff on doing a wonderful job with this crazy time and all. And I was also wondering about no longer having masks in in facilities or in businesses and things of that nature. And I also just wanted to make a comment that Dr Fortna has no, well, has stopped doing the video reports and stopped testing students and teachers unless there is a a good reason to to do so unless there's other concerns. And I was just wondering if if it would be pertinent for the town to recognize Dr Fortna and taking that on her own. She, well, everybody has done wonderful things. I'm not sure if that would upset others for not recognizing, or maybe we could recognize everybody for all the the good work they've done in keeping our community safe.
So I'll just attempt to councillor Boden, just my understanding, my understanding when we get to stage three is that masks are no longer required. They would be probably, my gut is that they're probably going to recommend them, but they're certainly not going to be mandatory any longer unless a municipality puts that by law in themselves, which a number of them have. But I I anticipate when we get to stage three, that it will only be our recommendation would be the highest thing they would do, and there would not be any mandatory requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I remember councillor campaign talking, maybe it was a year ago, maybe it was a little over a year ago. Saying maybe we should have a big celebration once this whole thing's over, if it ever gets over. So I'll let you jump in councillor campaign and then councillor Olson.
Well, I think it's nice to recognize one or two, but not separately. You do them all or none whatsoever. And Kim, with what you said about the gun show as a member of the gun club, I'm sure it is cancelled. So
Okay.
We have too many out of province guys that come to and this and that and tell we knew what the borders were. We've decided we're not going to have a gun show this year. So I'm pretty sure it's cancelled.
Thank you for that councillor campaign. Director Armstrong?
Just in regards to appreciation for Dr Fortna, and by no means am I saying to not do a thank you, but I just, it just made me realize that I had not maybe communicated to council that she's received copious accolades through the online forum that we hosted and worked with the medical clinic on from the general public. She's also been given the the thanks specifically from Mayor Warwick because he was going to take on the whole video piece initially. And when we kind of pushed her outside her comfort zone, it took on a life of its own and she got herself into the rhythm of doing these videos, which became very much appreciated by the general public. So on council's behalf, those congratulations appreciations were delivered person to person on a very regular basis and provided with feedback that we've been receiving through social media, through face to face in the office, that staff were delivering. So kind of in that manner. I'm not saying in any way, I'm not saying don't do anything. I just, I just realized I hadn't, I hadn't been communicating that to council and recognizing that she was doing that on behalf of her peers, her coworkers as well. She did receive good accolades, I think in her social media posts that I shared from. Oh, now I'm not going to think of it. I think the acronym is APA, something Physicians of Alberta.
Yeah, and
And places that we haven't seen.
Yeah, and I agree after the fact that it was, yeah, the minute you start selecting individuals and you're, you're sure to miss somebody. But I wonder if if there could be a comment from council regarding everybody, like a blanket. Thank you everyone in the community for, or just leave it alone.
Yeah, this will tidy this up because it's seven o'clock and you know what I'm like about time. So.
So, Mr Mayor, what I would like to do then, we can throw this on our council in full meeting for discussion in terms of how council wants to move forward, whether council wants to move forward with a community celebration, whatever type of. So give you some time to think about what you might think is appropriate and we can put that on the agenda for June 30th.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Olson, you had a comment. Costin, sorry.
Yeah, if we want to move on at seven, it's fine. I just, there's been some frustrations for the pool hitting capacity, the like one or two times it has. I'm just curious if administrations heard a lot because I had some frustrated people and some very creative responses to get some kind of local advantage. I mean, I I told them we're not going to consider it because in a couple of weeks, the world is all healthy again, but just curious if there was some action to the office.
Comments wise, yeah, no.
Nothing came to me directly at all. Our staff are very, they were aware of the limits. We are operating within those guidelines until such time as they are relaxed. And we've made that very public that we'd have to do that. So hopefully we won't have too many more days where we have to put those restrictions in place.
Not this week anyway. Okay, thank you for that. Last chance councillor campaign, did you have a question, comment? No, okay, good. Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion. The council accepts the town of Hannah COVID-19 operational plan update dated June 8, 2020 for information. Thank you councillor Boden, all in favor? That is carried and at 7:02 or yeah, this is just part of our, it's not even, never mind. Public hearing is not separate. We don't have to recess to go into that. No, okay, then. All right, so we are really? So we have adjusted the agenda. Okay, never mind. So we have a public hearing, we are starting at 7:02. I have the rules here in front of me. I think I printed them instead. Maybe I'll just go down to them. I will explain the rules. The applicant for the proposed land use designation change will be given the opportunity to explain their reasons for having this made the proposal. Before the hearing concludes, the applicant will be given an opportunity to make some closing remarks. Any person present who wishes to address a public hearing either in opposition or support may do so. We will ask all those present who wish to make a presentation to give us your name, who you represent, and whether or not you're in in support or oppose the proposed land use change. A list will be prepared so that we can call you forward to make your presentation. All presentations made to council will be restricted to five minutes. Your cooperation for affording everyone an opportunity to make their views known is sincerely appreciated. No discussions will be permitted between those making presentations. Only councillors will be permitted to ask questions of the presenter for points of clarification. The purpose of this public hearing is for council of the town of Hannah to gather information regarding the proposed land use designation change and municipal development, development plan designation change to be able to give consideration to all options when making a decision as to whether or not the proposed amendments should be put in place. All right. So and then with that explanation of the purpose of the public hearing, Mr Neil, I will turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So as councils aware, the town of Hannah was, is the current owner of the property that is under discussion for rezoning or redistricting. So the town of Hannah has made an application to amend the land use by law. And by redesignating, I'm not going to go through the the legal description, but I think council is aware of the lands the town purchased on the west end of town. We refer to them as the West, Westlands. So we are proposing to redesignate them from highway commercial to industrial. And and the reason for that application is that obviously council's aware we've been in discussions with GFL about a proposed fertilizer blending facility to be developed on those lands. And in order to have that use and that development occur, the lands would need to be redistricted. As part of that, part of the process and part of the statutory plans, we also have a municipal development plan that identifies that area as highway commercial again. But there is another land use in the municipal development plan that's called highway commercial slash industrial. So we also be amending the municipal development plan to highway commercial industrial from straight highway commercial as part of the, as part of the process. So as councils aware, we gave first reading to this by law and first reading to the municipal development plan amendment by law at the May 11th council meeting. That triggered advertising of the public hearing and it was published, published in the Hannah Herald three times. May 19th, May 22nd and June 2nd. Provided opportunity and it provides opportunities for anyone who feels they could be affected by the amendment to be heard by council. Residents in the immediate vicinity and even a little bit larger, and perhaps Devon can explain where the letters went to. Paliser manages that part of it. But they were notified of the application for amendment and the public hearing date and advised of the opportunity to present their comments on the request for amendment. So the procedure has been followed. Mr Mayor, a little bit different in the fact that we're having a public hearing in a virtual setting. This is the first for us. But anybody who was encouraged or had comments and felt they wanted to share them, were invited to register for this evening. And the only gentlemen that we have here registered are representatives of GFL. I have not had anybody else request to be able to be in attendance this evening to provide an opinion one way or the other. To provide an opinion one way or the other. So I think that's it for the overview, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Neal. That takes us to Palister Regional Municipal Services. Devon, I'll just turn it over to you and then if you guys are tag teaming or whatever, we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you, your, thank you, your worship and members council. I hope everyone can hear me okay. If you can't, please let me know and I'll try to make a change here. I'm going to share my screen here. Is everyone able to see that okay? So. I do have a short presentation today on the proposed bylaws, just to provide a bit of information to the public. If they're in attendance or council in general to help with any decision making. Kim did give a pretty good outline on some of the background information, so I'll try to go through that a little bit quicker at the beginning of my presentation here. But yeah, to start off again, we're looking, my presentation is going to cover both bylaws. So bylaws 101721, which is the proposed amendment to the municipal development plan. And then also 101621, which is the proposed amendment to the land use bylaw. And so quickly, my presentation outline, I'm going to talk a little bit about background and purpose. Then I think the main point for discussion today is a bit about the town statutory documents, land use impacts. And what policies are within, a little bit about circulations and notifications with. Kim talked about a bit already and then we'll end with the conclusion. So to start again, the applications were submitted to Paliser from the town of Hannah. The applicants on the applications, there is two applications, one for the MDP, one for the land use bylaw. As a result, we have bylaw 10172021, which proposes to amend the future land use map. Specifically within the town's MDP. The map currently identifies this, the subject location for future highway commercial development. And it's being proposed to update that showed as either highway commercial or industrial development. Which would allow either of those land uses to occur, we would, it would allow either of, either rezonings. To either highway commercial or industrial to be supported at the location. The proposed bylaw 101621 approaches, proposes to amend the land use bylaw. By redistricting or rezoning the parcel from highway commercial to industrial district. So this change will permit the development of uses as outlined in the industrial district out of, in the town of Hannah land use bylaw. So it's an important thing to note as well, although we know that this is for a specific development in particular. Which is the proposed fertilizer blending facility, it does allow those land uses that are aligned in the industrial district. So in the future, if there was, say, the fertilizer blending facility didn't end up locating there. Or they located there and moved on, if the town didn't want to permit other industrial uses to occur there. They may want to consider another rezoning in the future back to highway commercial. Quickly, just the location again, I think everyone's pretty familiar with the area, but in the southwest corner of the town. Oh, and in yellow there, and again, I won't go through the legal land descriptions. So background information, why are these proposals being reviewed? So again, developer is interested in pursuing an industrial operation with the purpose of creating fertilizer. That's going to consist of 70% elemental sulfur and 30% compost. So the compost is created from recycled food organics, which would be trucked to the facility. And all composting processes occur offsite and only the finished composting product is brought to this location. And all blending of compost and sulfur will occur onsite and outdoors. So that's understanding of the process based on some of the public engagement sessions that were held. But if GFL wants to add anything to that, after the presentation, they're welcome to do so. So based on the current industrial, sorry, currently the property is on highway commercial districts. So again, in order to support this industrial development, it's going to have to, we're going to have to make that change. To industrial to allow, to permit the, the use to be developed. So next, I want to talk about the municipal development plan specifically, which is probably the biggest or the most important statutory document. That the town has when, that helps council really to guide decision making on future land use. So the first part I want to look at is actually the future land use map, so this will give a little bit of clarity to what we're talking about. And why the MDP is being amended as well, but you'll see in that location. In that southwest corner, and if you look at the legend, which I apologize, it's probably a bit hard to see, but the bright red is just highway commercial. So if there is any rezoning proposed, that's not highway commercial, it wouldn't currently be supported in that location. So what's being proposed is to turn it to the dark red color. And that allows for either highway commercial or industrial development. This way, if in the future it ever did want to be rezoned back to highway commercial, then MDP wouldn't need to go through that change again. This area would just generally be known to support either industrial or highway commercial uses. So looking at the MDP policy specifically, when talking about future land use, 2.4. Is particularly in regards to future land use map and it states that proposed land use. By law amendment shall conform to land uses identified in figure one, which is the future land use map and all provisions of the MDP. So again, this is why we need to amend that map. And 2.10, this is a general policy, but I thought I would throw it in just for council's knowledge. But and then DP talks about future land use and really that the town should focus or shall focus on providing a quality. Land use mix, including appropriate residential, commercial, industrial and community service land uses for the greatest benefit to residents and business. So I'm sharing that there is a good mix of land uses available and opportunity for developers within the community. The next part I wanted to talk about a little bit is the commercial policies. So 4.8 states that the town shall maintain and promote. Existing highway commercial areas and need to develop. And in appropriate locations along the highway frontage and major railways in the town. And then 4.9 talks about revitalization of Highway 9 commercial corridor. Shall be a town priority in cooperation with special areas on adjoining vacant or abandoned highway commercial properties. So that's not to say that these policies aren't saying that all of these areas must remain as highway commercial. But in the past and historically, there's areas have been prioritized as highway commercial development. So I think that's probably one of the main considerations for council tonight. When looking at land use policies. So again, historically, this area and including the land on the south side of Highway 9 has been dedicated to highway commercial land uses. Prioritized by for highway commercial investment due to. The proximity and access to Highway 9. But again, it's not to say that this location needs to stay or all on there needs to stay as highway commercial. But more that this is what has been prioritized in the future. So I think council's big consideration tonight, or maybe a thought to discuss is that. Is it time to consider a shift in development priorities for the portion of this area that we're talking about? I know even speaking with Kim a little bit and getting a bit of background on the location. From my understanding, it's been vacant for quite some time now, if not forever. I believe if I understand correctly, there is a KFC there historically and I believe a gas station. But that was quite a while back and majority of the parcels have been undeveloped. So I think that's something for council to think a little bit about tonight is, is it time to consider that shift? And maybe look for other opportunities on this land or commercial developments. And I think that's really a, a community decision of what's, what's best for the community going forward. Next part I wanted to talk about a little bit is industrial policies in MDP. So if we do, or if council does support the rezoning. What kind of considerations should be in place for industrial development within the town? So 5.6 talks about industrial development, shall be encouraged to maintain a high standard of design. Landscaping and screening of outdoor storage areas. 5.9 states to promote the development of safe aesthetically pleasing industrial areas. By providing adequate access and appropriate buffering and screening for adjacent land uses. And then 5.10. The appropriateness of an industrial use or location will be evaluated with full consideration. Since it may generate in relation to existing future residential areas. New industries that may cause land use conflicts such as air pollution, odor, cess noise should not be permitted within close proximity to residential areas. And at this location, there is no adjacent, immediately adjacent parcels that are residential. From my understanding, there is two residences across Highway 9 to the south. There's a fair buffer distance provided there with Highway 9 being there. But just for consideration that there are two residences in the general area. So looking at those policies, what kind of land use impacts do we, should we consider with industrial development? And specifically looking at the fertilizer blending facility. So first of all, the proposed fertilizer facility specifically. The proposed development may have the potential to create orders based on the nature of what's going to be occurring there. But I know GFL provided quite a bit of information on this at the public engagement session and answered a lot of questions. Mainly explaining how, and again, they can correct me if I, if I misspeak on any of this. But from my understanding, a lot of the composting process is completely done offsite. And they're bringing the finished compost to the location and if there is any smells associated with that. From my understanding, that means they actually have a bad batch of compost, so they would typically send it back. And then the other consideration being the sulfur and they've talked a bit about that as well. Has limited, if not no smells to it. But just to be on the, the safe side, we, Paliser's recommendation would be just include a condition on the development permit. Regarding order control and this would in, just ensure that the town has the ability. If there are any issues did arise to be able to, to bring that to light and, and that, that could be controlled through the development permit specifically. Next, I want to talk about a little bit about just general aesthetics and industrial development at entrances. Or kind of the gateway to the town. I know that's kind of the, I guess, when you're coming down Highway 9, that's probably one of the first areas that you see as you enter the town of Hannah. So should council consider, consider approving the bylaws? I think it's worth considering that. Future development at the location should be appropriately screened from view with the landscaping. Just to ensure aesthetically pleasing development when entering the town of Hannah. And I know when we're talking about piles or potential piles of sulfur compost that could be quite high. Screening might not be 100% realistic for the whole entire area. But just to consider if there is, through the development permit process, ways to make sure that there's some good landscaping in place. Or landscaping plan to, to make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible. Next comment was on his truck traffic off of Highway 9 and the access road that's there. So again, should council approve that proposal? Palace is recommending that any future developer at that location should consult Alberta Transportation. Regarding access off Highway 9 before initiating any development permit process. Just so they're aware of any requirements that Alberta Transportation may have at that location. I'll speak to that a little bit more in a second because we did get a response back from Alberta Transportation in the circulation process. So last point is the developer in this instance is working on acquiring necessary environmental approvals. Through the Environmental Protection and Enhancement Act. And Paliser's recommendation is to just ensure all necessary approvals are in place prior to the operation of the facility. So getting into the affected party circulations and notifications. As Kim mentioned, the proposed bylaws have been advertised and circulated in accordance with Municipal Government Act. Circulation. Letters were sent to adjacent landowners that may be affected by the proposal within the town Hannah. Roll back to the map really quick and see if I can show. This one might be better. Can everyone see the amendments area map again?
Not yet. There we go.
Perfect. I think we got a bit of a delay going on. So typically the MGA requires just adjacent touching property lines. But for this one, we did expand a little bit to the far side of the highway. Just to ensure that all residents do get the opportunity or made aware of the proposal. So these three parcels along Highway 9 are actually within special areas board. So we did include circulations within special areas as well. And we did circulate to special areas for. As municipality themselves, so. Just going to scroll back down. Kim, can you let me know when you see the affected party page again? Good, Devon. Thank you. Awesome, thank you. So the proposal, in addition to circulation letters, the proposal was also posted in the newspapers, Kim mentioned. For three weeks, which is above the, the mandatory two weeks. So again, just ensure all residents had the opportunity and knew the proposal was coming. To the date of writing this presentation, which was June 3rd, Paliser had not received any letters of opposition to the proposed bylaws. And as of today, I still haven't received any calls or letters or emails regarding the proposal. The one response that I did get regarding the proposal was from. And they had the following statement, impact on the highway network. Therefore, the department, sorry, department has no concerns with the rezoning. But future development because of this rezoning does have the potential to affect the highway network. So Alberta Transportation will need to consider potential access improvements to this parcel. As well as a roadside development setbacks standards. Once Alberta Transportation receives a roadside development permit application. So this is essentially saying that when we're talking about the rezoning and changing this from highway commercial to industrial. Alberta Transportation has no concerns with the change in the use of the land. But when it comes to the actual development permit time itself, that's where Alberta Transportation may have some considerations and requirements. Off of the highway, just to ensure that, that access is sufficient, there's enough room and it's safe for, for people using the highway. Lastly, I also wanted to add that the potential developers did, did hold a, an engagement session. On May 19th for town residents to attend and learn more about the proposed development. And this included a question and answer session with potential developers. So again, that was another great opportunity for town residents to get informed, ask questions. And at that meeting, do we send any concerns that they may have? So that wasn't a mandatory meeting for, for GFL to hold, but they did do that as well. So in conclusion, I think, I think one of the bigger conversations for council to consider is. Whether this area should transition to an industrial land use. Is the time to consider different opportunities in this area for highway commercial investments. And then should council consider approval, just the appropriate development permit conditions should be considered. Just the appropriate development permit conditions should be considered to ensure mitigation of any potential offsite impacts and to work to maintain an aesthetically pleasing gateway or entrance into the town of Hannah. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or be involved in any discussions going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Devin. We'll just get you to unshare your screen. That'd be great. I guess we could maybe engage some questions from council. Does council have any questions for Alser? Nope. Okay. Good. Thank you for that. That takes us to, and Devin, I'm just wondering if you can even maybe just hang around till we give the, if you can, till we give the bylaws reading, there might be some questions that come up out of that when we do that. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, for sure. I'm happy to stick around for that.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right. So we'll turn to the development officer for the town Hannah Director Moore. We'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having reviewed the documentation and overseeing and looking at the presentation from Paliser, I concur with the observations and recommendations and the conclusion as presented by Mr. Diano from Paliser for this particular development. There hasn't been a lot of activity on this property for many years. And I think that the change to industrial, if given the right parameters, should have a very small effect on the community and would welcome the development.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Does council have any questions for Director Moore? Nope. Okay. Thank you. And I see we're going to go to the applicant and I'm going to just assume, and I might be wrong in doing this, that Mr. Francis is going to be speaking as your mic is unmuted. Is that true?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Don.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, we are the applicant, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry.
And I don't have anything further to add, so you can now move on to those in support.
Right. All right. So we, sorry, we forgot about that. Last time we did this, same thing happened. That's great. All right. It's not like we do these every day, Mr. Powell is involved in this. And this is being recorded for old history. That's wonderful. Love that. All right, Mr. Francis, I am turning it over to you. I assume you're in support of this. I'm pretty sure you might be.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I was just waiting anxiously for my turn to voice my support. I am in full favor of the amendment as this will allow GFL to proceed with the project that we feel will benefit the community greatly. So we would like, we would like the support to move things forward.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that, Mr. Francis. I guess I'm just going to ask then, is there anybody on this call, which I don't think there is, that is opposed? And I don't see any. So, and we did not receive any letters. Is that correct, Mr. Neil? That's correct. All right. Would the applicant like to make any closing remarks?
No, we just want to thank everyone involved, all the stakeholders for their, for their participation, especially in the public engagement event. And throughout this process, it's been a long road, longer than normal because of COVID. And no one is looking forward more to getting started than the team here on the call. Mr. Walls and Mr. Bupari were really excited about spending some time in the community and getting on with it and getting to work.
Excellent. Yeah. Well, and we appreciate you choosing our community as, has a potential for your business. So we really appreciate that. Thank you so much for your time tonight, gentlemen. And we are going to move right on to the bylaw reading here.
Mr. Mayor, just one, one comment. So in, in, I had, I did have a verbal discussion with the adjacent property owner to the east, Mr. Metke. And he just wanted me to pass along that he's supportive of the amendment, supportive of bringing additional business and opportunities into our community. And I just thought that that was important to share with council. Even though it was just verbal, he did, he did make an effort to let me know that.
Awesome. Thank you for letting us know that. I appreciate that. All right. So then I will close this public hearing at 7:32. And with that, oh, I guess I better pay attention to round out. I always do that too. Are you good? We can just move very long? All right. So we're going to do a bylaw. Or I buy law item 10.01, by law 1016, 2021, the land use by law amendment. I'd entertain a motion that council gives second reading to by law 1016-2021 land use by law amendment. Thank you, Council Broden. All in favor? That is carried. I want to issue a motion that council give third and final reading to by law 1016-2021 land use by law amendment. Thank you, Council Stickle. Okay. Now is your chance to ask any questions, council. Wow, we've, we have discussed this, I guess, in, in depth. All right. Well, with that, then I will, council committee, was that, you're okay? You're good? Oh, you're muted. You're muted. I can't hear you. I see you smirking. So.
I was just wondering what they're going to do with the rodeo sign. Are they going to allow it to stay there or?
Mr. Counsel Campion, I believe, and I haven't had this discussion with anybody from GFL, but I do believe, and I might stand to be corrected, that the rodeo sign that is on the property is on the very west end of the property. And that's not part of their proposed development. They are going to, if, if council agrees, they are going to own that land, but they aren't planning to develop it at this point in time.
Okay. I was just curious.
It's the first I've heard of a rodeo sign. So when I, when I come out next, we'll have a look and we'll make sure that Mr. Walls doesn't, doesn't drive, you know, a piece of yellow iron over it or something silly like that. Okay. So no, we'll, we'll have a look if you add it in and we'll circle back with you. If it's that important to the community, we obviously want to make sure it stays intact.
Well, it is one of our biggest events of the year. So it would be nice.
Well, we know that, we know the event is, we want to make sure the, the sign, if it's, and we, we probably want to have a look at and make sure it's maintained as well on our property. So Brad, Brad will make a note of that.
Great. Thank you.
Good point, Council Captain. Thank you. Any further questions? When what's going twice, I have a call a question. All in favor? And that is carried. All right. That takes us to by law. 10-02, the municipal development plan amendment. I would entertain a motion that council gives second reading to by law 1017-2021 municipal development plan amendment. Thank you, Council Campion. All in favor? That is carried. I would entertain a motion that council give third and final reading to by law 1017-2021 municipal development plan amendment. Thank you, Council Olson. Any questions regarding that? I think it was fairly clear, but never assume. All right. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? And that is carried. And I think that's it for our bylaws, gentlemen. I thank you so much for, for being here for this meeting and taking time out of your busy schedules to be here. Appreciate it very much.
Okay. Well, thank you, folks. We'll sign off now.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Devin.
No problem. Thank you. Good night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you very much. All right. So that takes us to council reports and roundtable. And I'll just use what my screen is and that will start with Council Deadlock, followed by Council Broden. How's your deadlock?
I think everything is in my report. I haven't really been doing a whole lot of anything lately.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions for Council Deadlock? Nope. Okay. Thank you. So we'll go to Council Broden, follow up with Council Olson. Council Broden, the floor is yours.
Yes, I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Is there any questions for Council Broden? Okay. Thank you very much for that. That takes us to Council Olson, followed by Council Campion. Council Olson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I've nothing to add to my report, just to the millions of people watching. There's been some strong feedback. A lot of people assume that we are having parallel parking downtown. I personally speaking, and I think many few people around, I present no desire for it. And I keep telling people, but people keep assuming that we are just going full charge with parallel parking downtown. So just hoping to spread the word.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Any questions for Council Olson? Yes, Mr. Neil.
No question. Just a follow up comment to Council Olson's parallel parking conversations. So as council is aware, 818 Studio is doing public engagement on it for exactly that purpose, to hear from our residents, what they like, what they dislike. And to that effect, I know that they have been at the previous two farmers markets and they have set up in the office adjacent to the post office. And at the end of the day, certainly that is the message and maybe we need to do a better job of getting it out there that they're there, they want to listen, they want to hear your feedback on, on not only the downtown redevelopment, but the signage and stuff like that. So certainly that is the message we need to keep forward is they were just concepts, just ideas floated out for feedback. By no means has any decision been made on how we're going to proceed. But the feedback is important and if they have it, please, please get their feedback into 818 Studio. And they are, I believe, Thursday, Fridays in town, in the post office location for the month of June and at the farmer's market. So.
Thank you for that. And thank you for that, Council Olson. All right. Council Campion, follow with Council Stickle. Council Campion.
I've got a, as I said, a big country waste meeting on next Wednesday. We met today with the auditor and did our audit thing and went through pretty well. Looks good. Other than that, that's all there is.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Council Campion? Okay. Thank you for that. Council Stickle.
Yes, things are starting to get back to normal. Paliser staff is coming back in on different days. They have different shifts, but they're starting to come in more, more all the time. So things are starting to get better. Paliser still kind of. At the lodge, a few people still upset this COVID has got a lot of the elderly people upset. So, but maybe this will clear up. But I do have one thing I wanted to address to all of council. I talked to Kim about this the other day. The crosswalk sign by the, by the town office. I had a guy approach me yesterday morning and he told me if he had one more coat of paint on his vehicle, there would have been a heck of an accident there. He was just joking, but he did say, if we don't do something soon, he's going to get a tractor or something and remove it. And as I was talking to Kim, my, my idea was maybe we should move it, move that sign up to the school on Seventh and Fourth. There's a crosswalk sign there, but it's faded out and it's just a sign. I thought maybe if you had a flat, that flashing sign, if we moved it up there, it would certainly help the teachers when they're moving their kids across from the twin pool in the arena in the winter time. These little guys, they go across with no, no thought. And we have the high school kids driving their vehicle with no thought. And I think if they had a light flash, that light flashing up there would do a lot more good. And I think we would have a lot less complaints from the public about where the sign is right now. But just my thought, if the council's kind of think about it at our next meeting, maybe we can discuss it. I just wanted to bring that up.
That's what I was going to really recommend, that we have maybe a discussion at our next council meeting. Oh, maybe people should learn how to drive. It is not a stop sign.
I know. Yeah.
So you can't fix stupid. Sorry. And I shouldn't be saying this publicly, but honestly, people need to learn how to drive. There's no stop sign on it. So people need to pay attention. Sorry. I need to, I need to vent about that because it, that bothers me that people are blaming us for other people's inability to actually drive. So that's, you know, I'm sick of hearing all that kind of crap when.
Yeah. What you do is. But it was all over Facebook last week, I think it was. But yeah. Maybe we just paint the pole, the pole at the bottom white or something, just to change it.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe that might be a good idea. Yeah, yeah. That's actually, because it's the same color, maybe that might change it up. Yeah. Council Campion?
Yeah, just in support of what Council Stickle said. The other day I was parked at the treasure branch. Before I got out of my vehicle, when the bank, there'd been one vehicle stop at it. So when I come out, I was putting my money in my wallet, which wasn't much. But like, not that it took me a long time. But I sat there 15 minutes. In the 15 minutes, there were four vehicles stopped at that bloody light. Four vehicles. That's ridiculous.
But that's not, that's not our fault. That's, that's people's fault for not learning how to drive. I mean, I'm sorry, I'll argue that to death. And I mean, we could have put a stop sign in there. We chose not to. So whatever. That's fair. Yes, Mr. Neil.
So Mayor Warwick, yes, when I did talk to Council Stickle, I certainly encouraged him. If it was something that he wanted to discuss to, this would be an appropriate time to bring it up. But I did, I did say that, you know, we should put it off. You know, nobody on council wants to make a decision on the spur of the moment. And I think this gives us some forethought as we move forward to future council meeting. We can have a discussion. We have to, we, we have to remember a couple of things. One, we made a decision to put a light there versus a four way stop versus doing nothing for pedestrian safety. So if we removed that safety traffic device, we're back to where we were before and is our, is council satisfactory with that pedestrian crossing crossing? Secondly, I'll admit to anyone and anyone who's brought it up that, you know, certainly this was a recommendation that I put forward and I thought it was the best. I still think it's the best. I just, as the mayor said, you know, my plan and my theory did not have people stopping at a pedestrian sign. And I think if we could get past people stopping at the pedestrian sign, whether that's a change of color to the bottom or if there's another way we can change, you know, I think it's appropriate. I think a four way stop there that people have talked about, you know, the reason we did this, so we're going to stop less than 1% of the traffic there on a daily basis versus stopping 100%. But I will admit, I never foresaw people not understanding that it's not a stop sign and stopping there. And, and I think we have to think of some better options. My biggest fear is we've tried to make pedestrian safety priority there. But what's happening now is we're, we're putting in some vehicular safety concerns because of people not being able to follow the signs. So we will add it to a future agenda, but it gives council, I guess, some opportunity to think about some options or how they want to move forward at the end of the day.
Thanks for bringing up Council Stickle. Appreciate it. Any questions for Council Stickle? Awesome. Thank you for that. And I will apologize for not doing a written report, although I was in the same meetings that you folks were, so I didn't actually have anything. So, so I had nothing. I, I was, I was a special council meeting at our info session. That's the only thing I had. I think that's the first time ever since I've been mayor. So that's, that was okay. Anyway, so if, if there's any questions for me, I take them now. That's not a problem. Awesome. Thank you. With that, entertain a motion that council accepts the council reports for information. Thank you, Council Campion. All in favor? That is carried. I'll just go through all of the correspondence items and then we'll maybe come back to them. If anybody wants to comment on any of them. 12.01 Minister Municipal Affairs MSI Funding Letter. 12.02 Debra Alberta, Japan, Twin Municipalities Association Invoice and Save the Date. 12.03 Village of Riotcroft, Minister of Justice Support for RCMP. 12.04 Cactus Corridor Newsletter. Twelve point zero three, Village of Ryecroft, Minister of Justice Support for RCMP, twelve point zero four, Cactus Corridor Newsletter. Uh, twelve point zero five, twelve point zero six, the towns of Fowler and Mayor Thorpe Support for RCMP. Twelve point zero seven, AUMA Town South Update. Twelve point zero eight, Marigold Library System Report, twelve point zero nine, Marigold Library Systems, Han and Municipal Library, twenty twenty, value of your investment. Twelve point one zero, Marigold Library Systems, twenty twenty Annual Report. And twelve point one one, Marigold Library Systems New Building Update. Twelve point one two, Prairieland School Divisions Board Highlights for May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Uh, twelve point one three and twelve point one four, Smokey Lake County and ID nine, Letter of Support for RCMP. Twelve point one five, Stand With Asians Coalition, Action to Commemorate the Two Hundred and Fifteen First Nations Children. Twelve point one six, Alberta Visitor Information Program Discontinuation. And twelve point one seven was our addition of, um, a letter regarding flags at half-mast. Um, from, uh, Lindsay and Kevin Heine. Is there, uh, anybody want to speak to any of those? Or have questions regarding any of those? I know you do, Kim. Just keep your hand down. Yeah, Council Olson.
Uh, I assume there'll be discussion, but, uh, the last letter that was added, um, from Lindsay and Kevin, um. I mean, it's, it, it's a big event, um. That occurred. It's a dark part and I had a discussion with my thirteen-year-old daughter. And she was shocked that it was never on the agenda. I never knew residential schools existed, um. All through school. Um, I mean, it's, it's there. It's a dark part, but that's the reason of discussing history is to not repeat history. Yeah, and I think it's an exceptional thing. I've, I've never seen a request in all these years for something down to half mast, and that's kind of the level of emphasis in my mind.
Yep, agreed, agreed. Uh, any other comments regarding any of the correspondence? All right, Kim?
So, yeah, I was just gonna reiterate, uh, Council Olson's, uh. A comment. So administratively, we've talked about it, uh, the last couple of days. And our recommendation would be that we do lower our flags to half mast, uh. The, the Legion has lowered the one next to their building and the school has lowered theirs on their property. Um, so my understanding, reading some of the literature around it, is that people are lowering them for. Two hundred and fifteen hours, uh, just as the equivalent of nine days. So. That would be what we would recommend and that's what we will move forward with. Um, in, unless we hear different from council and we'll try to get to that, uh, as soon as we can, whether, you know, Gwen's crew can get to tomorrow or the next day, but we'll. We'll make it a priority to, uh, to get them down to half mast.
I'll just throw this out there for consensus. Hands up anybody who doesn't think we should do that? Doesn't think Council.
All right. Yeah, I know.
I, I figured that would make it easier. We didn't have to count any, so, okay. Uh, Council Boden, you had a comment?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to indicate that I would support, um, whatever the decision is regarding the two hundred and fifteen children.
Yeah. Awesome. Yeah, very important. It's, it's, and I agree with Council Olson. It's crazy that it hasn't been taught in schools. I knew nothing of it, uh, at all in my lifetime, but. Um, I know even a former councillor of ours, uh, councillor Cruz, Jerry Cruz, actually lived that. He was in a residential school and mentioned that to me at one time, so. It's awful. It's terrible, but, uh. Okay, so if there's no other comments or questions, uh, regarding, um, our, um. Correspondence items, I would entertain a motion that correspondence items twelve point zero one to twelve point one seven be, uh, accepted as information. Whatever it is, uh, Council Campion, thank you for that. All in favor? And that is carried. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we move to closed session. And I have that motion from Council Campion at seven fifty-one. All in favor? Sorry, jeez. Yeah, okay.
Excuse me, did you say seven fifty-one?
Just seven fifty-one, yeah.
Okay.